Second by Dixie Newman. All in favor? Motion carries four and... Ms. Newman, do you have a vote on this? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. The rule is suspended. Would you read the additions? I apologize. It does not pass unanimously at six to one with Tisdale being in opposition.
Hello. To our consent agenda, we're substituting item five J, Exhibit A only. We're adding item five O, Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number One, to the construction agreement with WC Four Trucking. We're adding five P, Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number One for Eagle Point Park. And we're also adding item five Q, Resolution Authorizing Change Order for Oscarinda.
Thank you, Lucy.
Do I have the move amended?
I have a motion to move as amended by George Lawrence. Do I have a second? Second by Felix Gines, all in favor? All against? Motion passes, six to one with Paul Tisdale in opposition. We'll start with the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report.
We don't have a lot of discussion in this workshop. We've got some documents in front of us. The workshop has happened. I worked through the COVID thing and there's a number of ways that we can organize this way. So we've all got to step by step, once we get through and hopefully it makes sense on how we go into the 2011 year with the workshops actually. But for the... Do you have any questions about your question?
Did you intend to make your mask look like you're Amish?
No.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor regarding his report?
There's a question, the buildings, like the visitor's center and who renting anything out since they shut this out? So anybody have the reception coming up that can't use the buildings?
The governor said before, get it one thing. Our opinions that go down the road between now and July.
For our... Jerry, I'm probably about to conclude. We have an increase in the number of people asking to rent facilities, but we're holding to the rules that the governor laid out in terms of attendance, in particular Civic Center, for example. The civic center. The governor says it's...
Can only have ten. It also says, but other facilities that have other restrictions, you could, you go by whatever those restrictions are. So we're reading that as a civic center is 25 percent. Twenty-five percent of a thousand is 250. So we can go all the way to 250 with all, of course, all of the requirements for masks and everything else. So we are still getting requests for using those facilities, but we're holding to the numbers that the, you know, that the governor's proposed to us. And nothing's changed in terms of the numbers of attendance. His last executive order said 20 outside, 10 inside, but it also had the caveat that if the facility had other restrictions, you could go by those other restrictions in which, and that we're reading that as whatever the limit occupant, occupancy for the facility is down 25 percent.
So the visitor's center would be 25 percent, like at the top floor of the visitor's center?
Of that, of that, of whatever room they're asking, whatever room they're asking to use. So small gatherings would still be okay. I mean, a big, you're not going to have 300 people in the visitor's center though.
Capacity down 25 percent, yeah, right.
The people taking the reservations are making people aware of what the restrictions are.
I just wanted to check up. People have asked about that. I actually been invited to a wedding at the visitor's center. I was just wondering if they're still having reception there. That's what I was trying to find out. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the mayor?
There being none, you still got the floor?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Census, we're doing a little better on census. Citywide, we're at 58.1 percent of people who got something in the mail that have responded to it. So that's ticking up. It's actually above the state's average right now, and it's, it's actually higher than we were at this point in 2010. That's good. We are lagging in some of the wards, and I won't, I won't call them out, but some of the, some of the wards, and I'll share this, the map with you, there are, that are lagging behind the average, that we've needed some help.
Have they given us data that will help us localize where the areas are in our wards?
Yeah, it's, they reported by, not by ward, but by census tract, but you can see the map.
Okay.
You can see...
If you look at the map of the census facts, you can go like where these are. So there's nothing colored in, but they're local. So clearly we're talking about...
Put it on the screen.
I have another question for the mayor.
Where seven is a good pick. What is it? There's something there.
Miss Brown.
One of the things that I've got back is, or I guess, did you get something in the mail or put it away not knowing where it was? And when they're asking, oh, well, they just could just fight among more having problems with alcohol. That's what I've got that magnificent time.
The addresses, I think was going to drive it.
You know what we're not seeing on these percentages? We're not seeing somebody who didn't get anything in the mail. This is 58 percent of somebody that got something in the mail as it responded. But there are people like young recruits at Keesler Air Force Base who are responding, and we'll see their data eventually, but didn't get anything in the mail.
So it does ask for a code. When I logged on, it asked for a code, but it does let you log in by your address. So you don't necessarily need a code.
Thanks for that help.
A question.
George Lawrence?
We got all the employees in the city registered? Have y'all working on that? That's a lot of people. When you go to the families and everything, it's sort of, right there's a lot of people. You make sure that should be easy to get done.
Yep.
And the other thing I noticed you've been working on, and Chief Mello is, we've been doing all the burnouts on our beautiful bricks. And I know, we call that in.
We made an arrest.
Is it, all right. Is that going to be hard to clean up?
He's going to do it with a toothbrush.
I mean, the burnout, can you get it all pretty easy? You got to do the whole road.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're going to make an example.
No, I'm just saying, clean it up. How much trouble is it going to be to clean it up?
I'm not sure, you know, with the bricks and, you know, whether we can do it chemically or, you know, just by brute force, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, you spend a lot of money on the road to make it look nice.
Yep.
It looks pretty bad though, black box, so.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll move on to the council report. Mr. Lawrence, allowing you to continue.
You want me to do first? Hope everybody had a great weekend. I know that COVID-19 is running, but you know, when you have Alabama and Louisiana shut down, everybody comes to Biloxi. We have a lot of people in town, we just got to take care of it. And they tested way more people than ever, so there's a lot more tests, so there's a lot more people testing positive. Now the ICUs, and I always tell you all about that, both of them are up, you know, but at the long-term facilities, a lot of people from the long-term care facilities are being put into the hospital. And roughly 278 people now in ICU, and 150 of them is on the ventilators. So that number has went up, disbunk a lot. But there's way more people being tested and taken care of. But they also have almost 30,000 people being cured, I guess you could call it, or had it, and went past them. So those are good things. But it's just something we got to fight through. So we'll take care of that. City Biloxi will come back on top, so we'll do well. Thank you. That's it. How's that good enough?
That's great. Counselwoman Newman? Counselman Glavine?
The only thing I want to follow up with, if I can, on a little paving project, 300 feet of blacktop. This isn't in my ward, but I got a call from Matt Langlin as, it's the Curry subdivision on McDonald's. Is that in your ward? Has he contacted you about it yet? Okay. Well, I'll let you handle it then. He just asked me if I'd check on it. I'll let Councilman Newman take care of our constituents. I have no report. That's it.
Thank you. Counselman Gines?
Yeah, I had a great meeting with the mayor, Walt, finishing up the infrastructure. Thank you guys for meeting with me. Wanted also, this is on, can you? I want to bring up COVID-19. We're having more testing in the community of War Two over at the Civic Center on Thursday, and it's going to be from eight to one o'clock. So I encourage anyone who think they may have a symptom, get over and get tested. I too have been affected. My family, we got a person that contracted the COVID-19.
That was Memorial going to do that, right? Memorial Hospital's going to?
Yeah. Memorial Hospital, Memorial Hospital, that Gulfport is providing the test. So I just encourage everyone to come out. All about protecting our community. Also wanted just throw in a side note, Mayor, we still have a hospital down by Esau Water Mall that could be a contingency plan. All the hospitals start to fill up, respirators, and we run out of beds. My understanding is that facility is pretty much ready, ready to go. So it wouldn't take but a week to get it up and going. Throw that out there. Maybe that can translate up to the governor's office from this standpoint. Next weekend, encourage all my council members to donate. We're having a backpack giveaway for kids back to school. It'll be August the first, Emery Beck Park at one o'clock. Because of COVID-19, we're probably just going to fill the backpacks up, have an assembly line and drop them in there. Want to donate, know that, you know, parents are afraid now sending their kids back to school. Even if we do distant learning, our kids are still on a need to have material supplies at home. Know the mayor had an initiative of making sure all the homes in Biloxi have a way of computer use. And right now, we need it more than ever with our kids that are out there. Maybe areas like the Housing Authority areas or the Hope Six areas, we need to look at a way of making those areas, which can't quite afford it, to do some type of broadband where kids can get on for free. I know different companies, they have like $9 per household at a student rate. And I don't know about Sparklight yet or anything, but we may need to inquire if we can get a special rate for our kids who, who parents decide not to send them back home. But we need to kind of start looking at those things, like I say, put contingency plans in place for educational purposes and also involve, I bet.
My idea on some of that, you know, there is some broadband money for rural broadband. I mean, we could couple that, and, you know, if it takes us, you know, we got 13,000 homes to possibly light up, and some of those monies may be available through the rural broadband and, you know, dollars that, that will come into the state. So that's a good thought to see if we can piggyback, you know, with that. Thank you.
Yes, so thank you. Thank you again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Councilman Barrett?
I just got a couple things. Number one, July 30th, we're also having a testing, or the county's doing testing out at the Wool Market Community Center on Old Wool Market Road from eight o'clock to one o'clock. I think that's through Memorial as well, it's July 30th. And then the mayor and I will, will get hit up on this again Thursday, so I was going to ask you, the striping on Jim Burd Road, I know that we had an issue with mailboxes, and some of those have never been moved, and it's been, it's been finished for a long time now. And I don't know if we're responsible for it, or if the county's responsible, but there's no lights on that road at night, and it's just dark. So even if we just stripe the middle of the road until we figure out the mailbox situation, that's something that, if there's any way possible, we need to get that done as soon, you know, as soon as we can. And I don't know, I know that we can't touch the mailboxes because the property lines comes to the road, it's on private property or whatever, but whatever, and let me know if there's something I can do to help, but we need to get the sides of the road striped too, because that's one of the roads that, when you go off the edge of the road, you're in the ditch sort of deal. And so whatever we need to do to, to work with the county or whatever to go forward with that, but it's been, it's been a good while now that it's went without being striped.
Well, the county was supposed to stripe it. We'll talk to the county, see if there's an issue.
Yeah, and I know, and I drove down it.
On the mailboxes, I think what we need to do is run another paragraph in our media outreach to remind people that, how far their mailbox has to be back from the road.
And I drove down there, and I think there's only one or two that actually stick out, but I think the problem is the machine extends out over the road a little bit whenever they're, they go through there, and so the mailboxes that aren't actually on the road are too close to take that machine, is the only thing that I can figure, because there's not really any that stick out over the road. And so I don't know, you know, how the machine's set up, or if it extends beyond where it's spraying, what would cause that issue, but...
We ran, we ran a diagram earlier when the road was being paved, asking the people to move their mailboxes back. And there's a diagram that the, in the diagram that shows the dimensions that they have to be back from the road, the post office regulations. So we'll run that again, just to remind them. Sort of, I kind of feel like the ones that don't want to move their mailboxes, pretty soon they'll, they'll learn.
They'll get moved on their own.
Get moved on their own. Pretty soon, sooner or later, they're going to knock them all over. But we'll run that diagram again and ask people to please move their mailboxes back. And we'll talk to the county about the striping. Christie, if you would remind me.
All right. That's all I have, thank you.
They've got the striping machine.
I don't have much. Christie, I spoke with you earlier about some of the road paving. I just wanted to know if we had any information or an update regarding the underwater vegetation, or is there any potential resolution to dredging that area? Have we come up with anything? And so for those of you that are in the dark in this conversation, around the Bocheane area, Bocheane area, there's, I mean, there's still debris in there from Katrina. You can, when the water's low, you can see refrigerators and ovens and different items out there, but apparently we can't get a permit to dredge it because there's underwater vegetation, so we haven't gotten the approval from DMR, is it?
That's right. And we just entered into a contract amendment with Seymour Engineering, I believe it was last week, to start doing some of that additional work with, with DMR for us, to start the process about getting some approvals and some mitigation for the, they call them SAVs, submerged aquatic vegetation. So we're, we just entered the contract, Seymour's going to start talking to DMR for us to see what we can do.
So this is, we're optimistic about this?
Yeah, I think so. They seem to, so far, DMR, from what Seymour has told me, because they've been speaking to them on our behalf for this, that they, they seem to be open to something, because if they weren't, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be pursuing this at all. If they just said no, we'd be like, I don't, you know, what else can we do? But they seem to be open to some sort of ideas. I don't think it's been done before, but we're going to, we're going to try.
Okay.
Survey, the dredging plan is done?
Yes. And our, and our citywide dredging plan is also complete. We have the final draft now. If anybody, if anybody would like, it covers all of our areas that we, areas we've done, areas we haven't done yet, so we kind of have a better idea of what we need to be doing, instead of just kind of skipping around like we've been. We're trying to come up with something more concrete. So if anybody wants to see that, just let me know. We have a copy. Mike's got a copy and I've got a copy.
Do you know if we were able to squeeze in the Patricia Place, the little canal back behind the golf course?
It was in the dredging plan.
Okay.
And I need to, I need to add that probably to Seymour's contract to go ahead and get a permit on that area.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, I'll add that.
Well, the nice thing about a dredging plan is we can treat dredging like we do streets, but street paving, as maintenance work that has to be scheduled all, I mean, instead of having to react to the squeaky wheel, we can have a plan, so we could say, this year, these are the three areas we're going to dredge, and next year, we'll be working on the permit for the three we're going to do this year, and then, and so forth and so on, so, so we can get, get permit. Permitting can be done like a year out, so we don't, not held up. An example of the usefulness of the dredging plan is Councilman Glavine sent me one, a request of somebody wanted their boat ramp dredged, and that was in which?
Hills.
Holly Hills. What, we've, we've already responded to them, at least on an interim basis, but we looked at the dredging plan, and the dredging plan showed that the, there was already four and a half feet of water there, so any, we were not going to be able to dredge any more than that. But we'll go back and validate to see that that really is four and a half feet. So the, I think the dredging, the dredging's long-term plan, basically a long-term plan will allow us to not only get ahead of ourselves on the permitting, but be able to answer, respond to people about when they're, when we're going to get to them.
And Mr. Leonard, I just want to clarify something. On the dredging plan, that four and a half feet, doesn't it stipulate that we can maintain it at that four and a half feet over a period of time? Doesn't the permit allow us to do that over a period of time, maintain the four and a half feet?
That's good, you know.
I think what I read...
But I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Gentlemen, I recommend it's plain in the capacity. That's what we're going for, four and a half feet. But that, the overall plan is not the actual permits. Generally, the permits do allow us to do continual maintenance for a period of sometimes one year. Our harbors, I think they let us do, maybe 10 years on our harbors. So I don't know what they are on this recent dredging that we did, but yes, generally, we can go back in there within a year, maybe five years, and do the, without having to go through this whole process we went through. Our permit stays open for a while.
Okay. If I read it correctly, I just want to, I'm trying to recollect, I think it is 10 years, even, even beyond the harbors to the recent stuff that we did.
I'm sure, because we do more dredging harbors than anything.
Right.
So I know what those are, but that would make sense.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lavata, the Director of Engineering, and Mike Leonard, I appreciate it. That's the end of my report. We will move to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total of 45 minutes. If you would, please keep your comments to three minutes per person. I'll start on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side. If anybody would care to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name, sign Anybody on the left-hand side of the room, or my right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Anyone in the back of the room? There being none, we'll move on to the policy agenda. We'll begin with ordinance A. Lucy?
Hello. Ordinance to amend the LDO to amend text change for fences and et cetera.
I move.
I have a motion by George Lawrence. Do I have a second? Second by Paul Tisdale. There'll be no discussion, this is a first reading. We'll move to ordinance B.
Hello. Ordinance to amend the LDO to, to make changes to the WF waterfront zone.
Do I have a motion? Oh, excuse me, this was, this was previously moved by George Lawrence and Paul Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, I'll give you the floor.
I know this is all about the waterfront zoning, which was really set up to be pretty much the gaming. And so why are we adjusting so many things, they're putting conditional use on some of these things and permitted use, and you got a couple of things, you got, on the second page, you got a Gulfport private, a public is a conditional use. Then you got a swimming pool as a principal use, conditional use. What is that supposed to mean?
That means that, first of all, let me say this. What we're doing is we're going through the land development ordinance, you know, our ordinance is 10 years old now, and it's the midway point of when we adopted the comprehensive plan. So what we're doing is going through the LDO page by page and addressing some issues. There may be, have been some errors, there may have been some things that need to change at this point. You know, we've had a lot of evolutions of technology and things like that, that may have changed the way that we look at things. So that's the reason that we're doing this now. We didn't just go in and single out waterfront, we're going to have more changes coming to the council for consideration. But with the waterfront, one of the things that we wanted to do was to address some of those things that may be associated with the convention center, for example. You'll notice that that's, that's one of the things that's, that's in there, is to allow a conference center, a convention center, training center. Also, usually when you have a convention center, there may need, be need for a helicopter pad. So, you know, those were things that were either prohibited or only allowed as a conditional use in the land development ordinance. So what we do is we go through and we look at each of these things on the line item and try to determine, is this prohibited? Why is it prohibited? Should it be prohibited? Is it something that really should be prohibited, or is it something that we need to take a look at to allow it to go in? For example, like schools are allowed in any zone districts. But, I'm sorry, colleges and universities, one was allowed, one was not allowed, and it just didn't make any sense. So what we did is go back and make recommendations that, you know, if you're going to allow the schools to be in any zone district, why not allow a college or a university with certain restrictions be allowed? So basically what we're doing is just trying to apply some common sense to some of those things that were prohibited here, and if there wasn't a legitimate reason for prohibiting them, then maybe open the door to allow them.
What is prohibited in here? Which ones that you can't have?
Well...
Does the P stand for permitted or prohibited?
No. P means permitted. It would be permitted by right.
Well, you keep saying the other thing.
C means it's conditional use, and in the table that we're talking about, if it was left blank, that means it's prohibited. And there's a specific statement in there that says anything that's not specifically allowed is prohibited. So what we did is took a look at some of those things that were prohibited and just kind of opened the door for it, or made recommendations to open the door for it.
And you got the gaming establishment on the second page, you got a number and everything by it, and the other recreational entertainment, you got a number about that. What is that supposed to mean? What are the numbers for it? Is that just a code number for the?
Well, some of, some of these, there were no changes to it. Like a gaming establishment, for example, was conditional use under the previous ordinance, and it remains a conditional use now, because there are certain uses that you have to take a look at with a gaming establishment. So any, anyone that comes in with a proposal to do a gaming establishment is still going to have to go through.
We're not talking about that, Jerry. We're not talking about the next step. We're trying to get these rules straight. We know what they have to do. It says gaming, why is that a conditional use when that was, the waterfront was created for gaming? Why is that a conditional use? That should be permitted.
Yeah. It, it's a conditional use because it's part of a PDGE, which is a planned district gaming establishment, and the gaming part of it has to meet certain requirements in order to be allowed. We have to take a look at the, the whole picture, you know, the, the parking and everything else. So it's a conditional use. Also, we have to make sure that they have gaming commission approval, so that would be one of the conditions that we'd have to take a look at. There, there are certain things that are, that our ordinance allows, but it may require that we make sure that they have gaming commission approval, or that they have DMR approval or DEQ approval before they can come to us to go through the process.
I don't have the gaming, I can't have it anyway, so.
Yes, sir. And we're not trying to throw any prohibitions up here. All we're trying to do is to make sure that the ordinance is clear.
And when you explain these, what you're doing with these things and all these different changes, you know, we don't know what they were. Were they the same, or do you have, what did you actually change?
The...
A lot of stuff was already conditional use and permitted use anyway.
Well, some were, and there were some that were conditional use that we moved to permitted use, like the, like I mentioned, the convention center. You know, if, if you can have a gaming establishment in waterfront zoning, why prohibit a convention center in waterfront zoning, or, so why not allow it to come in as a, as a permitted use? So it's... So, it's just, uh, it's really kind of a common sense thing, that's what we're looking for.
That's what I said, I mean, you, we actually had that, a convention center was prohibited? That was written in there?
It was either prohibited, or it was conditional use, and we moved it to, to permitted. I'm s- let me get back over to the first page. We moved it from conditional use to permitted use, so that it would be allowed.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's fine, we need to notice, 'cause you know, you don't vote on none of this, so if we vote on one of these things that is bad, well, there people are gonna come calling on us. Well, you voted for that, and Mike Leonard always tells me that, you voted for it, you know? So we gotta make sure what you're doing is right.
Yes, sir.
When you make these speeches, make these speeches to us, and what we dealing with, not what's gonna happen next week, what we dealing with right now? I'm just trying to find out what we doing, everything's fine.
Yes, sir.
Just double checking with you, that's all. That's your job.
That's right, and that, that's why we have a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and that's why we provide y'all with the minutes at the meetings, so that you can actually read the, the context and the way that these things were taken. So, uh, we're, all we're trying to do is to make the, the, um, LDO more user-friendly.
The biggest thing I couldn't find out is exactly what we changed, if we changed anything. We just made sure the thing was correct. I knew, I couldn't tell you what you actually changed in here. Maybe somebody else read this a little different, I couldn't tell you if you changed anything or not.
In retrospect, what we should've done is to put down what it was in the ordinance before, and to put it down what it is in the ordinance now.
And you should've done that.
Yes, and we can provide y'all with that, that won't be a problem.
That's what we'd like to have, the information, the facts, straight up.
We'll, we'll do that differently next time.
Thank you.
Councilman Tisdale? No further discussion. Anybody else on the council? There being none, I call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Move to ordinance C, please.
Ordinance to amend the LDO specifically related to fences and easements.
This was again moved by Team Lawrence and Tisdale. Councilman Tisdale? Nothing? Councilman Lawrence?
This is strictly about building fences on easements?
Actually, actually what this is, is just a housekeeping thing. The council has already approved changing that one section in the code that changed the, who makes the decision about whether or not a fence is allowed on an easement? The ordinance, the LDO originally said that the Director of Public Works would make that decision, but it's, there's been a change, so that it would be the Director of Engineering that would do it. You've already approved it. What we're doing is going back, because anytime you have a text change in the land development ordinance, the ordinance requires a public hearing, so we went back and had the public hearing after the fact. We're just bringing it back to you, but it's strictly a housekeeping thing.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to ordinance D.
Ordinance to amend the LDO specifically related to non-residential and planned development districts.
Thank you again, this was moved by Team Tisdale-Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
This is correcting a Scribner's error, Jerry, as I recall.
Yeah, well, there, there are three things tied to this particular ordinance. Number one, we're removing live-work dwelling. There was a Scribner's era that showed a live-work dwelling as a conditional use in RS5 zoning, which is single-family, and a live-work dwelling is a, a structure where you have fifty percent of the building being used for commercial purposes, and fifty percent being used for residential purposes. The theory was to be able to, like, create a business where people could have a business downstairs, and they could live upstairs, or if it's a, a one-story building, half and half. But a live-work dwelling brings a commercial element into single-family zoning that doesn't need to be there, so the answer is yes. That was a Scribner's era, that this was allowed as a conditional use in RS5. The, the second item under this ordinance is that college or university was not allowed in some of the single-family zonings, and in, well, actually, in all of the single-family zonings was not allowed. So, this is a part of what we talked about earlier, where if somebody comes in and they meet the criteria to put in a college or a university, then it would be a permitted use. Government structures, schools are all allowed as a use by right in any zoning that we have. And so what this would do is open the door for college or university to, to do the same thing. They'd have to have a minimum land size and those kind of things, but it would be allowed. And then the last thing, well, the, next to the last thing, is that outdoor storage was listed as a conditional use in industrial zoning, and that seemed to be a typo, because if you can't have outdoor storage in industrial zoning, where can you have it? So we felt it shouldn't be a conditional use, that it should be a use allowed by right. And then the last one had to do with RM10 zoning, which is residential multifamily, ten units per acre, and the Scribner's era was there was originally, there was a requirement for a twenty-foot side setback, and that should have been twelve and a half feet. So, all four of these, yes, sir, to answer your questions, were Scribner's errors that we're just correcting.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Lawrence?
Going back to the, the twenty feet and the twelve and a half feet, was the twenty feet ever voted on?
We have very little RM10 property in the city of Biloxi. I don't believe that we, since this ordinance came out, I don't, I don't believe that we've had a project that's came in that's wanted to develop on RM10, but again, as we're going through the LDO page by page, and line by line, these are the things that are jumping out at us, is that, this is, this always should've been twelve and a half feet, not twenty feet, so we, we brought the correction to the Planning Commission and the council.
That was my question, I just didn't know how we got to twenty feet, how that was ever written in there. That's why, actually, excuse me, if it was ever voted on, or it's supposed to be twelve point five feet, that's it?
Twelve point five feet is what it should've been.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel? There being no further discussion, I call for the question. All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion, Councilman Gains, any opposed? Are you for? Motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to four E.
Ordinance to amend the LDO pertaining to short-term rental and time-share uses.
Thank you. Again, this was Team Tisdale and Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence?
You're gonna break, break this down for him, Jerry, explain what we doing with the twenty and the thirties?
Okay, Ed, you know, the council had asked that we conduct a public hearing to consider removing short-term rental from RM20 and RM30 zoning, so that short-term rental would not be allowed in any residential zone, and what that is, this is the result, this is for your consideration, to remove those from RM20 and RM30. The, the rest of the part of the ordinance is just us having to separate short-term rental from time shares, you know? If, if this goes through, if the council votes to remove short-term rental from RM20 and RM30, then we would have to separate those two in the table. Right now, they're, they're in one line item, short-term rental and time share, and so we would separate the two, because they'll have, they'll be different requirements that allow in different areas.
That won't mess with anything that's already existing, will it?
Any short-term rental that's been approved up to this point would be grandfathered in, and unless those people come in with a, a request to extend or expand, they would continue to be grandfathered in from now on.
Councilman Tisdale, you were the second to, to motion, or to, you seconded this motion after the floor.
Yes, we spent a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of discussion on this, RM20 and 30, with short-term rentals and apartments and individual units, and whole complexes, and, and this has continued over the years, so I, I would just think that everybody here would, would support prohibiting in the future, short-term rentals in RM20 and RM30 zones. Thank you.
Councilman Gains, you were speaking, I'll let you continue.
Oh, let me answer my question.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barrett?
So, my understanding is correct, this will eliminate any future short-term rentals going into any 20 or 30?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But what's currently in effect, now, have we, and since this has started, have we gotten an abundance of these that have come before us?
For, uh, RM20 and RM30? We've, we've had some that have come in, but most of them that have come in have been conversions, where there was an existing apartment building, and they wanted to convert to short-term rental, and, and we, we frowned on that, because you're taking a building that was not designed for that purpose, trying to convert it, and there's no way really to go back in and to install those safety features that should've been installed when it was first constructed.
Yeah, I, I just, I can't support this. I think that there's conditions where, where some of them, I mean, I think that it's good where it's at, it's not like we have an abundance of these, and I just don't think that it's a, a one-fits-all deal, and, um, it's, I, I just feel, and it's not like we're getting hundreds of these and it's bogging us down or anything, I just feel like there's conditions where short-term rental does fit, and going back to last year, when we changed the ordinance, I believe that this is one of the things that we changed when we changed the ordinance last year. And, um, we, we just have to be real, short-term rental is a part of the future of tourism, and I, I believe that there are situations where it fits, and there are situations that it don't fit, but I think that if we just say nope, all RM20, RM30, we're shortchanging ourself as a tourist town. I just got back from Orlando this past weekend, I stayed in a, one night I stayed in a Airbnb, and you can go on and look, and it's a huge tourist town, and I would venture to say that they have just as many Airbnb and VRBO properties as they do hotels, and you know there's a lot of hotels in Orlando, and I just think if, you know, we're billing ourself as a tourist town, there are situations, yes, I agree, that it don't work, it doesn't go there, but there are situations that it does, I feel, and so I, I can't support this.
Jerry, do we have the, will we still have the option to use the conditional use in this area?
Not if this passes. And let me mention a couple of things here, too. We have a lot of single-family houses that are located on property that's owned RM20 and RM30, and some of the ones that we've approved, like one on Briarfield, his house happened to be in RM20 or RM30 zoning, I can't remember which one, but that opened the door for him to be able to do it. The second thing is, is that if we do leave this as conditional use, then every application that comes in would still have to go to the Planning Commission, still have to come to the City Council for approval, so you, you'd still be able to check every application that we receive for it.
So are you saying we can utilize the conditional use for, for special applications, like what Nathan's talking about?
No, if you vote to approve this, it will not be allowed in RM20 or RM30 at all, period. That'll, that'll end it.
But if we keep it like it is, if we vote this down, every apple, every person that applies for an RM20 or 30, still has to go to Planning Commission, and then it still has to come before us.
That's correct.
And like I said, it's not like we've had thousands of these to where it's bogging us down at the Planning Commission and in, in these meetings, and so I just think that this moves counterintuitive, as far as, you know, tourism goes.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, so if we did pass this, the only option would be to change the zoning.
That's correct.
If it was RM20, they would have to go change it to, um, commercial or, or whatever, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah. And I, I want to echo what Councilman Barrett said, you know, we got areas that there are these short-term rentals, and there's a piece of property right there next to them, and the, the protocol has been, or at least we've, this is how we've kind of viewed it, if it was all single-family homes around that development, normally, we voted it down. But if there was some, I guess, short-term rentals in the area, and somebody's trying to develop a piece, that's when they come for conditional use under the current code, and we, we usually look favorite, more favorably on, on that. So, I hesitate, too. Some people think I'm in the industry, I'm against short-term rental, I'm not, but I am against it intruding on single-family homes where people have invested in their resident, and that's the quiet enjoyment, or the single-family enjoyment that they want, and then all of a sudden, it gets encroached upon by, by short-term rentals. So, I tend to be hesitant to, to vote for this measure as well.
Councilman, Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, I'd like to just point out a few, just a few things. One is, you're reducing the apartment stock, which means those folks who traditionally, those families or individuals who live in apartment complexes, as more of these apartment complexes flip either single units or the entire complex, we've seen some of that already, that's gonna reduce your housing stock for those folks who live in apartments and can only afford apartments. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is we deal with, again, individual units in apartment complexes. We've had several of those, Jerry?
Yes.
I think two to date, one on, somewhere in the vicinity of Southern Avenue, and one there on Briarfield. I think those are the only two. We've, we dealt with condominiums, remember originally on Highway 90, the old Saxony Apartments, which was, was that Cypress?
Cypress Cove.
Cypress Cove, and then we looked at the other apartment complex that flipped entirely to condo, the condos, rather, not apartments, but condos that flipped to short-term rentals there, just to the east of White Pillars Restaurant. I can't remember the name, is it Oak, Oak Shores? And then we have the apartment complex on Briarfield, and the apartment complex in several buildings there in greater Biloxi, and we've, this council has approved individual units within that complex. In the future, you're going, we, we are going to run into issues, I think, with being arbitrary and capricious as you decide which apartment complexes you're gonna permit to have individual units that are put on the market as short-term rentals. That's gonna prove troublesome, I believe. The other thing is, um, if I owned an apartment complex, I might be seriously thinking, because short-term rentals are a lucrative market, of changing the entire complex. And if I did that, just make the entire complex short-term rentals, but then however many units those were are no longer in the apartment stock for those families that, that live in apartments, if that's what they can afford. That's a gentrification issue. I think that's all I want to say for the moment, there may be something else that triggers a thought. I'm not against short-term rentals, and this does not prohibit short-term rentals. What it does do is make clear that if, exactly what, you've gotta be in a commercial area, I think there's one commercial area where short-term rentals cannot be, is that neighborhood business?
LB, LB, it's not allowed.
Limited business.
It's allowed in NB as a conditional use, and then the other zonings, including downtown, that allow hotels, it's allowed as a use by right.
Yeah, I think, I think most of the areas where short-term rentals want to be, although I've sat in on a few, uh, public hearings at the Planning Commission, where people just want to flip a rental house as a short-term rental, and it just, based on the location, and location is, is much of the appeal, and I get that, and Jerry's pointed that out a number of times, but I worry about the gentrification, and who can and a can't afford housing when you start using up your apartment stock and they start flipping to short-term rentals. So, I'm not against short-term rentals, I just don't think we ought to reduce the apartment stock over time. I think it's gonna be hard for us to remain consistent and not appear arbitrary and capricious, since it's gonna be a matter of time before we don't approve a conditional use for somebody, and we'll be in court, as we are from time to time. That's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Robert? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Let me, let me tell you something, this is pretty simple. You build a town from neighborhoods, you don't build a town from short-term rentals. We're trying to build a town. Short-term rentals is not, in 20 and 30, does us no good. Short-term rentals is not, and 20 and 30 does us no good. You're creating, like he said, a whole building, they're trying to turn it into something that's not really viable. But your city is built from neighborhoods and small businesses. We're not going to be sold out, and we're going to be nothing but short-term rental. You don't build a city like that. I'd be like taking Walmart, say, "Oh, you think Walmart going to be short-term rentals?" There ain't no residents there. Ain't nobody to vote up there. You gotta have people in your city. You have to live in your city. Short-term rental is not the answer for the city of Buxton. Really, not the answer for anybody. It's like Uber. They run around, do what they want, nobody has any control. You build your town, you eliminate spots is all you're doing. 20 and 30, don't be in there. We're not eliminating short-term rental. We're eliminating spots where you're going to create problem, where somebody got a 20 and 30 apartment, and going to turn into short-term rental, and like he said, it can't capile. You have to redo, you have to redo everything. So, just eliminate the problem. No creative problem, eliminate the problem. Have a solution first. We're not killing short-term rental. If that's all they want to have, and AB and B run your city, well, then, fine. Then y'all vote for this. But this is not the best thing for the city of Buxton at all. And when the Planning Commission come back and did this, they did it for a reason. The reason is, you don't live off of short-term rentals. You live off people that live in your city. Residents, apartment builders, homes, residential homes. So, I disagree with Nathan altogether. I really don't care what they do in Florida, in L.A. That don't matter to me. We're dealing with the city of Buxton. You're dealing with the people that live here, and that's what we have to do. Short-term rental is not the answer for anybody's city, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. And lastly, if I am lastly, do you want to say something else?
I would just like to say, as far as the apartment conversion goes, I believe that we can go in and address this separately. I think that this is too broad sweeping. I believe that we could go in and address the apartment conversion, and that'd be a complete separate issue. Instead of saying RM 20 and RM 30, you're out. Because like I said, I meant, there are situations where it does fit. To address the apartment conversion, that can be done separately in a different, you know, and just amend our ordinance on short-term rentals to address that issue. That's all. Thank you.
Robert. Yeah, you know, I kind of heard a few things, and this is not about changing apartments to short-term rentals. And I think we kind of got off track there. This is about the council having their door open to being able to make a decision for a special case. That's why they call it conditional use. And so, do we want to throw that out? Our option to review certain issues, because there's a separate, you know, in every case, there's always a special issue. In every case, there's always something special there. And we want to keep that door open, in my eyes, keep the door open. It's not about gentrification. When I heard gentrification, I'm like, well, that's a whole different subject. And that's not, we're not talking about gentrification, and we're not talking about changing apartments right now. We're not talking about throwing residents out so we can do all short-term rentals. We're talking about keeping our option open. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Just a few comments, then. Most of what I feel has already been said. Councilman Tisdale, I'll let you chime in. No, go ahead.
Okay, now, I want to respond to Mr. Gines. I appreciate his comments, but we sat here last, last week, I mean, our last meeting, talking about a 48-unit complex that was going to be nothing but short-term rentals. And pretty much was a hotel without being called a short-term rental complex. I believe Mr. Creel used the expression, "If it walks like a duck," you may recall that. So, we're dealing with this issue. We're going to continue to deal with these issues if this measure is not approved today. I'm just, you do what you want. Gentrification is an issue. If I owned apartments, and I can flip them to short-term rentals right now, that's where the money is. I can get rid of my residents. I don't know where they're going to go. Some will be homeless. Mark my words. You won't know that. They will know that. Mary Simons will know that. You'll see some of these folks on the street. That's just, that's just the fact. So, we are dealing with some of these issues. We're going to continue to deal with these issues. This would certainly straighten out and avoid a lot of, a lot of these issues that we're going to have to face. So, I won't, I won't tell you, "I told you so." George might. I won't do that, though.
George is the only one that will be around long enough to tell us, "I told you so."
Been around long enough, probably.
Let me remind you, I think, I think he went to school with Keith Richards. I think they were classmates. I think. That's it.
Want a statement?
Sure.
Say this back to Felix. The apartments are your problem. And as long as you allow 20 and 30, which y'all going to vote for that, that's fine. You know, that's what we're going to do half the time at these meetings. Deal with all the 20 and 30, and all the people want to come back and do this. Let me change my thing to short-term rental. It's not helping the city of Buxton at all. You're not doing any good. You'd rather have apartments, people living in an apartment. Let them stay apartments. So, you want to vote for this here? That's what you're going to be dealing with. Everybody and brother going to come back and change. And it's be AB and B sucking up all the money, and if we ever get anything back from it, it'd be a miracle. So, no, it's the worst thing in the world to do to your city. And if y'all feel like that, then you voting against really the people living in the city of Buxton is what you're doing.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence.
Real quick, real quick, just a little real quick rebuttal. If I recall, we did deal with that apartment issue, and we did turn it down. And in turning down, that's our job to deal with each case. We're supposed to take every citizen and every request seriously, and we need to look at it. And we did our job. We turned it down. So, that apartment complex didn't pan out, because it came through the council. But it gave us an option, and sometimes you want that option. Thank you.
Please, let me retort, if I may.
If you can offer something new, and you're not just regurgitating the same thing.
I will offer something new. This will address that point to my colleague in Moore, too, exactly. The same developer built a 36-unit complex, okay, apartments, came back to us, and the council on a split vote approved four of those units to be used as short-term rentals. Now, my question to you all is, if I'm that developer, and I come back three months from now and say, "You know, I want to flip six more units from apartments to short-term rentals." How are you going to deny that developer and still not be arbitrary and capricious? In fact, rather than another six or 12 units, I just want to flip the rest of the apartment complex. At some point, you're going to say, "No," and that's when you're going to get hammered on the arbitrary and capricious issue. And we dealt, we argued the same thing on short-term rentals with the condos in Oak Shores. Was it, we went round and round on this. They flipped the whole unit. But once we get into these individual apartments and flipping them, then it doesn't stop. So, that's it. I promise you, I'm done. My retort is finito.
And let me get some things out real quick, because I've been waiting, and I've been patient, letting you guys tort and retort and back and forth. If, if I may, with all due respect, we can come up with an anecdotal situation that will shoot down everything that comes across our desks, every single thing. Fortunately, this isn't an issue that we're inundated with these, with these situations as of now, so it's not improving political economy or efficiency at all. All we're doing is trying to shut down the opportunity, like you said, allow our discretion of this council to do the job that we're elected to do. At some point, when we are inundated with these things, we can readdress this. But I agree with the majority of the council that, that I would rather reserve the right to do what we did last week, and follow what we believe is the right thing to do, and apply the law as we believe is not arbitrary or capricious. Secondly, the issue of housing stock, the market will respond to the demand, Mr. Tisdale. If you have the money to open up one, and I've seen your house, it's very well decorated, I would probably rent from you. However, that will be a response by somebody with money that comes into the market that sees there's not enough housing stock for apartments, and will generate a building that will, will supply apartments for you, and those that don't want to live next to an Airbnb, rent from them. I think the most important thing, though, is retaining the discretion of the council. When we begin to subvert our political process, we lose the need to even have a political process. And I think this is something that we've proven in the weeks preceding us, that we do that very well with regard to short-term rentals. And I'm like-minded with the majority of the council that thinks this, this ordinance should remain as it sits now. Any other comments that will add to the intellectual conversation?
I want to add two things, and then I'm done.
You're on the clock.
One, there's a difference in condos and apartments. Condos are owned by individuals. Apartments are owned by one person or one company. They own the property, they had the right. And so, there's, there is a difference when someone comes to do that. Secondly, I'll echo what Robert said. If there becomes a demand for housing, the developers will build the housing. We had the land. And then, three, you can go look at VRBO, and you can go look at Airbnb. And those that would become homeless if their units were, if a shortage of housing are not the type of homes that are on Airbnb and VRBO. It's just, you can go look at it. And so, that's it.
Thank you. Call for the question.
Ask Jerry a question. When y'all had, please, when y'all had this meeting, what was the reason that they voted for this, to bring this on the table as an approval? What was their big, the Planning Commission, what was their idea, and why were they doing it this way, so they can listen to this?
To give you a short answer, I think that they thought at the time that the, the city council wanted it this way. You know, that might not be the only reason, but anytime that we go back to the Planning Commission, we tell them we've gotten a charge from the council to look at this again. I think that the way that they interpret that is that there's something wrong that needs to be corrected. And so, I think, now, we did make them, try to make them understand. The concern was that we're losing apartments, or we're losing dwellings in our workforce inventory, because people are now trying to convert over, because they see the money potential here. So, they were aware of, of that. But they voted for it. They didn't specifically state, "Well, here's the reason that we're going to vote for this." But I, my personal opinion is, is that the reason they voted for it was because they felt like that, as a charge coming from the council, that the council may have wanted this corrected.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Just before we call for the question, I'd like to say that we may not always agree with the outcome of the Planning Commission, but they do a great job with what they're doing. We charged them with a lot of, a lot of difficult tasks, and they've come through, and we believe in their discretion as much as our own. I know there's, there's a couple of important members that are in the, in the, from the Planning Commission that are in the room right now. And so, thank you for your hard work. I'll call for the question. All in favor?
All in favor?
Oh, excuse me. All in favor of the ordinance, excuse me, that is correct. All in favor to amend the ordinance as written? Have Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Tisdale all opposed to amending the ordinance as written? All of the five are against. So, E fails. We'll move to F. Correct.
Ordinance to amend a change in zoning for NB neighborhood business and RM 30 high-density to I industrial for properties identified as 211 Esters Boulevard and an unaddressed parcel fronting to Magnolia Street.
And this was originally moved by not Lawrence and Tisdale. It's actually Felix Gines and Mr. Tisdale.
Okay, give me a little update on it. What are they trying to build?
Murphy's Roofing already operates at this site. The majority of their property is already zoned industrial. They had two pieces of the property that were not zoned industrial, so what they're doing is a very reasonable request.
That's all there is. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yeah, they're, they're basically just expanding. Their business has picked up. There's residential, I think, to the north of that, but.
Multifamily residential.
Multifamily. RM 20 or RM, I'm kidding.
RM 30.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But anyway, their business is, their business has picked up, and they just need more room. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the council? All in favor, signal to raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Let's bring us to Resolution G.
Resolution granting minor subdivision plat approval for property located at 1636 Pops Ferry Road.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Kenny Glavine. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Paul Tisdale, because he said it louder. Discussion?
Yeah, this is by, I think, Motzy Road or whatever, by the Innovative Center.
Yes, sir. We're dividing the Innovation Center from property that they have on the east side that goes up to Motzy. And they're changing the Innovation Center to all medical. The people who were non-medical have moved out. They're opening the door for all of it to be medical, and they have a proposal for a medical facility to be located on this newly created lot.
Excellent. Keep the development and diversity coming. I'd ask everybody to support this.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale.
I can't add anything to what Mr. Glavine said. Thank you.
Councilman Lawrence, you almost had a second in there.
Ain't no biggie.
All in favor?
Is it, wait, is this qualify for any short-term rental or anything like that?
Actually, it is zone for it.
I'll vote that in. Put a house on top of it.
All in favor. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Paul Tisdale, a second by Felix Gines. Councilman Tisdale, is there anything on the consent agenda you wish to discuss today?
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking for Mr. Abid. He's in the phone booth changing into a Superman outfit. That's the only, I'll wait till Mr. Abid's back.
All right, well, Mr. Tisdale reserves his comments. We'll move to Mr. Gines.
I think I'm okay.
Nothing? Councilman Glavine?
I have nothing. I'm good.
Councilman Barrett?
I have nothing, other than I'm recusing myself from Item G.
Councilman Lawrence? Mr. Abid is in the room. We'll return to Councilman Tisdale.
Yes, on, on Item K, I just wanted Mr. Abid, this is tri-party agreement for the facade and redevelopment incentive grant. And I just wanted, Mr. Abid, just to review very briefly the purpose and process, Peter, if you can, in maybe 50 words or less.
Sure. This is the, this is the facade, Peter Abid, City Attorney. This is the facade grant component, similar to what we did with the Machado Patano Building. There is a total grant award for outside improvements of $42,000. There is, over, over a period of seven years, to be reimbursed from sales tax that will be generated from the property. This property, I don't think has generated any sales tax from even back before Katrina. I guess it used to be a, an office of some sort. The property taxes, there's no portion of that that will be reimbursed. But it's 75% of the anticipated new sales tax, which we estimate to be about $7,000, which would come up a year from now, and it would allow reimbursement of the improvements, a portion of the improvements, put into the building. The building owner, I believe, has put in about $1 million into this project. He's now leasing it to another seafood business, and it's going to be a good addition to downtown. We think this is a, a good project, and we ask for support.
Mr. Abid, I spoke with Mr. Newman on this property, and he assured me that he was not going to bring forward an application for an abatement, which I think he would qualify for. Does this Main Street, and while I trust that he is not, does this Main Street grant application in any way pro- does this Main Street grant application in any way preclude something like that from occurring?
It, it probably would not, although we have to do a but for. And we look at the total project. We look at the, what the county would do. The county would...
Mr. Newman? I think you, we're not done with that issue.
Not finished yet.
She abstained from this topic, so...
I don't think it would totally preclude it, although it's something we have to consider on a case-by-case basis. And it's something, you know, the county and the city generally work hand-in-hand with these things. So, the increment, I don't know what the increment would be, the amount of improvements that would be put in. But generally, I don't know of anybody that's... I know with Machado, they were not really generating any sales tax that they knew they didn't expect to. So, they got a component of property taxes out of theirs. Based on the amount of sales tax we saw that would come off of this, it felt like it was a lot cleaner and a lot simpler just to do the sales tax rebate.
Okay, thank you. And so, the short answer is no. It doesn't preclude that.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Well, he, he did assure me that he wasn't going to return with an abatement. So, it makes me feel more comfortable to move forward with this. Thank you. I know this was Mr. Tisdale's time. Mr. Lawrence?
To me, this is the kind of project you need. It's huge retail, great sales tax, going to do well for the city of Bucksie, going to bring a lot of people downtown. These are the kind of projects that we really need. And Machado, like you said, had a harder time because they don't have a great retail outlet. This here, with the, with the name and the seafood, you're going to have a great business, going to have a great sales tax. And this is what you need to do. This is what the purpose of these grants are. And I think this is one of the best ones we've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Is there any further discussion? We'll return to, Mr. Lawrence, do you have any other items to discuss? If you would inform Ms. Newman that she is welcome to return. Councilman Lawrence, do you have any items?
Yeah, I'm going to have a little discussion here on G. I don't know if Peter needs to be up here or Fofo. I know we did this, we extended this last time on this here.
For the record, let her reflect that Nathan Barrett has abstained from this item.
I know we, what I don't like about this here now is the option to sell. I don't think this property should be sold. I think this property is a huge piece of property in the city of Bucksie. I think whoever works with us needs to lease it from the city of Bucksie and not sell it to them. So, we doing this just to make sure they could buy it? And I don't want to support that. That's a huge piece of property. You can turn it in, just like you did with the 2.7 million with the Christina. It'd be better to lease the property, keep the property. And I don't care if you do 10 years, which you have to do. But why give the property away? That's eight and a half acres of pure land on Highway 90 and Howard Avenue. So, to me, I don't think it should be sold. Want to lease it with them? Anybody like that, you want to put an option there? Fine. But I don't think the property, that property is too valuable. 20 years from now, that's ought to be $50 million, that property. But why give it away? For, you know, 8 million or 10 million or something like that? Just ain't worth it. You can't create more property. So, go ahead.
Well, this is not, this is not a sales contract. It's an extension of the previous contract, the previous agreement, the previous option agreement that was entered into a year or so ago. And under that agreement, in exchange for, for $50,000, they had a two-year option time period and the right to extend that one additional year. And this is them asking, exercising that renewal to go another year. The right they have under the contract. So, we haven't gotten to the stage of, yes, the projects are go. Yes, they want to purchase the property. Yes, they want to talk about alternate arrangements. But this is to allow them the right to, I guess, control the property for an additional year as they continue to, to pursue their development. And, and I think we can say their pursuit has become more with private entities rather than public. That's really about all we can say.
I understand that. But I mean, the thing is that as long as you extend this, then they have the right to buy. And I think right now, I don't think we should be selling this property to anybody. Not just them, anybody. If there's somebody wants to lease the whole eight and a half acres, then that's different. But that way, we making money and you're still on the property.
It still comes back to us. Still comes back to us, though, before we sell it or anything or make that decision to sell it.
That's right.
Any further discussion on G?
Is it possible you can amend that or you can't amend that? I mean, since it's set up the way it is?
That was in the contract, so we're just, they're requesting.
That's what the contract says. We can always, we can talk to them about a different financial arrangement. But as I recall, it was, you know, the contract's in place. It's already in place. And, you know, I think we just need to let it go, in my opinion.
I, I think...
So, so this, this $50,000 covers three years?
Yes.
Even though we have to extend it one more year? We have to vote on that? So, you had two years already?
No. It'll be two years this November. And they're asking for an extension until the following November.
Let me just add, you know, that the support, we're supportive of this because it is heating up and it's close. And I think the terms of if it were to sell, I think it would be a time and a half time appraisal anyhow, if, if it worked. I think that's what the terms. So, it's not, we're not giving anything away. It's based on actually, if this project comes together. They just asking for a, a number of months to pursue it. But it is heating up. And it has morphed from getting sources from the, the public to more private at this point in time. So, it's, it's worth the extension that they're asking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess my main question is, I don't mind extending it. I don't, I don't want to get in, we have to sell the property to them. So, we have the right as a council to stop that in a year from now, then that's fine. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to automatically have to sell that to them or anybody else.
Is it fair to say that that card is passed or whatever? Didn't we, we've discussed this already when we entered into this agreement? Correct, Mr. Abid?
I mean, the contract spells out, if they exercise the option, the property will be appraised and they're going to pay somewhere over 110, 120% of the appraisal price. I don't have the original contract in front of me. But they'd have that right unless, you know, they could say, "Well, would the city rather, would the city rather take a small amount of payment over 100 years?" I mean, I'm sure they'd love to do that. But I mean, we could always talk about that. But as I recall, it was, you know, the contract has been voted on, so...
But the ball's in their court right now. We have, we have an agreement and it's their option to exercise the terms of the contract, correct?
It's their option right now to, yeah, they're just renewing their option.
Well, even the other...
Have made a decision whether or not to purchase.
But if they make the decision to purchase it, that's their decision. And we've agreed to terms of, of 110% over the appraised value, the commercial appraised value of the, of the property. And so, that's their option. We've agreed to sell as long as they, as long as they purchase within the, within the parameters by which the contract states.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think the council still had to prove the overall concept of the project as well to make sure we were satisfied with what the city would have to, have to put in.
So, Mr. Lawrence, we still have some opportunity to, to change the tide if we, if we so choose. I don't think that this option is going to address any of your concerns. But I think down the road, we have plenty of time to address them.
I don't have no problem extending. I just, my problem is that, that's fine. That's a fine property. That's way better than 20M, 20, what is it? Felix wants 20M and 30R M, them apartments? This is fine property, it daddy. This is, this is a ton of money.
I agree. This would make a great location for short-term rentals. If we can move forward, are there any other items that you care to discuss?
Paying on Forest? Is that just you paying them the, the 5,000? The 281 Forest?
Yes, sir. That's a grant. That's another one of the houses that was moved from, off of Division and relocated next door to that other house on Forest, just south of the, of the roundabout at Keesler Gate.
So, this is not paying them the 5,000? This just approves them that they're going to get 5,000?
They'll, they'll, they would be eligible to receive it after a certificate of occupancy and after everything checks out. They would get up to 5,000. They would, they'd be entitled to a grant of $5,000.
All right. That's it.
That's all. Did I already come? Ms. Newman, do you have anything to discuss on the council, the consent agenda? All right, and we discussed H earlier, basically the parameters of what I want to talk about on H with Ms. Lambata earlier. If we could move forward with a vote? All in favor of the consent agenda? Motion carries unanimously.
Abstained from K.
We have, to remind the record that Ms. Newman abstained from K and Mr. Nathan Barrett abstained from G. This will bring us to the code enforcement hearings. Well, this will bring us to the routine agenda, then.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion by Paul Tisdale. Do I have a second? Second by Felix Gines. Councilman Tisdale?
Let's, let's hurry up and get to the budget workshop. We're tingling with anticipation.
That is, this is the routine budget. I mean, the routine agenda. Mr. Lawrence, the floor is yours.
Hey, Walt, you got any good news for, you know, you hadn't been in the last week? They were terrible. Fofo didn't do anything good for his last week. What you got?
Walt Rhodey, Infrastructure Program Manager, city of Bucksie. We, I was emailing Mima today and was reflecting on it. It's been a while since we've had any money in the pipeline. We have another $708,000 that should be showing up shortly within the Mima website. And so, we'll have that within a couple of weeks. Just want to remind council, we're still flush with advances and reimbursements from Mima prior to the slowdown in the construction period. So, at this time, we're still well in advance of our needs.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Lawrence? Is there anything on the council regarding to the routine agenda? If there being none, I call for a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
A motion to recess by Paul Tisdale?
I have a quick note. I did, I did make a note that we're going to have the COVID screening Thursday. I just got a message that we're going to postpone it because of storms are expected Thursday. So, we're going to reschedule it. So, the COVID-19 screening in East Bucksie is going to be postponed Thursday.
Thank you. Do I have a second on motion to recess? Second by Kenny Glavine. All in favor? We stand in recess. How do we have a special council meeting directly following the scheduled meeting for our budget hearings? If we take five minutes and, and return back to the chambers?